All right. It is 6:30 PM. So I will now call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on September 26, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Nguyen?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members except Councilmember Gross are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. And I just want to say, Councilmember Gross is not with us this evening because he had a death in the family, so our thoughts are with him. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Nguyen?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Number four, I have a certificate of appreciation for the members of our community ambassador program. I am very excited to read this one this evening. Whereas, the city of Corleville's population has grown increasingly more diverse in the last decades, and city officials recognize the need to support and celebrate this diversity. And whereas, we recognize this diversity as an opportunity to enrich our community and therefore value the avenues of communication and feedback. And whereas, we recognize that it is through connections that our community will continue to grow and thrive. And whereas, we are committed to Corleville being a welcoming community, helping new residents get acclimated and acquainted with local support such as social services and language resources. And whereas, the community ambassador program is a network of trusted community members who serve as a voice and connection point between neighbors with vital resources and local services. And whereas, through inclusive community engagement and neighborhood-scale initiatives, members of the community ambassador program identify unmet needs of underestimated communities and collectively build systems of support. And whereas, the community ambassadors began doing the important work of reaching out to underserved communities of Corleville in these ways since the program was started by the Corleville Public Library, the Corleville Food Pantry, and the library's Community Resources Navigator one year ago. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Corleville, do hereby recognize and appreciate the past and continued work of the Corleville Community Public Library Ambassador Program. Signed on this 26th day of September 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. And I am very excited about this program, and I thank every single one of you who are participating in this, really appreciate all of your efforts. Would someone like to step up to the mic and speak?
First of all, how y'all doing? It's good to see all you guys here. I didn't have anything really prepared to say today, just thank you for the recognition. I've said this before, this kind of stuff is what happens when you play nice to Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. I guess what I wanted to say is that this program is amazing because the people involved are amazing. You guys may not know this, but they were already doing this in their own communities. They were already being ambassadors. They were already helping people. They're already being there for the ones who need it. And the cool thing about this is now we get to get together and create a unit of resources. And the other cool thing about it, we've all become good friends. And so that just makes it really special. Because I don't have much to say, just thank you for the recognition again, Corleville. Thank you, Corleville, for playing nice to Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm excited.
All right, fantastic. Say your name.
So hi, everyone. My name's Samira Abdallah, and I am the Community Resource Navigator for the city of Corleville. First of all, thank you so much for those of you that supported this program, and those of you that supported my position, which further curated this community ambassador program. It's been a great first year. This group of people you've seen here have done so much work in the community. Whether you see them or not, they would share resources. They've been a very active community member when the tornado hit our community, and they've translated, helped guide newcomers to the community, guided them through all the resources available to them. They've worked with the Corleville Food Pantry, and then the Houses into Homes. So they've been like a huge bridge that's been connecting community members that are in need to resources. So thank you to the city of Corleville, the library, and the Corleville Food Pantry. If it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't be here. So go cap.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all of your work. You have been instrumental in so many of the good things that are happening in our community. We really appreciate you, we're grateful to have you with us. Okay, let's take a photo. All right.
Does it usually help with me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Rob?
I don't think we're gonna photo.
No, we shouldn't.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
I think you're right.
You're gonna stay.
They should block us.
There's a wall.
Stand in front of us, Rob, would you? We don't want to be in the picture.
No, 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 no.
Thank you all for coming.
It's okay.
Yeah, come on up. You're such a part of the food pantry.
There you go. Well, like it or not, you're in the picture now.
Thank you.
There's that. It's good to see you all. Can someone of you guys accept a picture? Oh, sure, yes, of course. Oh, all of you guys could be in it. I don't want to be in it. Because I'm glad you guys were captured. Let's go. Oh, okay. Yes, yes, yes. There you go. Thank you. There you go. I'll give it to you, sir. Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you for all you do.
Okay. Number five, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So I don't think there's anyone here that is wanting to speak to us tonight, so we will move on to number six. Number six is Jacobs Clear Creek Eighth Edition. These plats are for a re-subdivision of Jacobs Clear Creek Fifth Subdivision and Outlot A of Altmeier Acres. And we will start with the Community Development Department Report with our Community Development Director, Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much to add to this one. It's just a preliminary and a final plat. This will create a new buildable lot, and staff has reviewed the preliminary and final plats and finds that they do meet the minimum size regulations for the C-2 Arterial District and conform with requirements for preparation and filing.
Okay, awesome. And is there any information from the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their September 6 meeting, and by a vote of six to zero, they recommended approval of the preliminary and final plat.
Fantastic. Thank you for that overview.
Thank you.
Okay, we will start with the first of two resolutions.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Jacobs Clear Creek Eighth Edition, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. And now, could we have the second resolution, please?
Resolution approving the final plat for Jacobs Clear Creek Eighth Edition, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number seven, Lot 1, Altmeier Acres. This is the third reading of an ordinance that would rezone an 11.14 acre site for a proposed industrial building and office space. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1011, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, from C-2 Arterial Commercial District to IPUD2 Industrial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption. Third and final consideration by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item B, could we have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving the final plat for Altmeier Acres, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number seven, Lot 1, Altmeier Acres. This is the third reading of an ordinance that would rezone an 11.14 acre site for a proposed industrial building and office space. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1011, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, from C-2 Arterial Commercial District to CPUD2 Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption. Third and final consideration by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any thoughts on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number seven, Lot 1, Altmeier Acres. This is the third reading of an ordinance that would rezone an 11.14 acre site for a proposed industrial building and office space. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1011, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, from C-2 Arterial Commercial District to IPUD2 Industrial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption. Third and final consideration by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. Questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Finally, item B.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 2, Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision. This is the third reading of an ordinance that would rezone a 2.43 acre site for a four-story hotel. Could I have the ordinance, please? Ordinance number 2023-1012, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 2, Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision, from C-2 Arterial Commercial District to IPUD2 Industrial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption. Third and final consideration by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item B, could we have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving the final plat for Altmeier Acres, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item C.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. And then finally, item C.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions on this item? Roll call.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. And then finally, item C.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 1, Altmeier Acres, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions on this item? Roll call.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number eight, Lot 2, Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision. This is the third reading of an ordinance that would rezone a 2.43 acre site for a four-story hotel. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1012, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 2, Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision, from C-2 Arterial Commercial District to CPUD2 Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption. Third and final consideration by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any thoughts on this item? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Finally, item B.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 2, Jacobs Clear Creek Third Subdivision, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. Questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number nine, Wellmark Blue Cross and Blue Shield. This pertains to the health insurance for city employees, and the city has received a quote for a 3.42% increase to its current premiums for calendar year 2024. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving the quotation of Wellmark Blue Cross Field to provide health insurance coverage for the city employees, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. So we have our new Human Resources and Risk Manager, Lynn Knight, here with us. Would you like to give us a little bit of an overview about this item?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I met with Wellmark recently and was really excited to see that our increase is less than what it was last year. Even though it's still an increase, we are well below the normal average of a 7% increase. So even though it's going to be extra money into 2024, it's still less than six figures, which I thought was a decent price. For example, a family plan only went up $65 from 2023 into 2024. So that's really all the information that I had given to me, unless anyone has any other questions about specifically raises the rate and what does not, so.
You said less than six figures.
It's $99,112.
Oh, as the increase?
Yeah.
Okay.
But in 2023, it was $110,300.
Do we know what we budgeted for the second half of this year?
I can't remember off the top of my head. I think it was somewhere between 7 and 8% is my recollection.
Significantly more than this?
Yes. Because two years ago, we were significantly under.
Ouch.
Yeah.
What is the employer's or employee's fee monthly?
Right now, the employee fee for a family plan is still $35 a month.
It continues.
And single coverage is free.
It's a pretty good deal.
It's a very good plan. We appreciate that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And services stay the same, no changes as far as benefits?
Right, it's exactly the same plan that we had last year, or that we have currently.
That's awesome.
Great, any other questions on this?
I guess I, how many of our employees were using Mercy, and how does that impact their healthcare if they go under?
I don't have those, sorry, I don't have those exact of where our employees are seen, but I do know that most of our employees stay within the network, which is a huge savings for us. About 95% of our cases, I think, stay in the network, which saves the employee money and the city money as well.
Which probably included both University and Mercy before?
Yes.
Okay, or now.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Number 10, smoke-free places and tobacco and nicotine-free parks and trails. This ordinance would prohibit the use of all tobacco, vape, and nicotine products on all park grounds and facilities within those park grounds excluding US and Corleville Waters and golf courses. And this is the first reading of this ordinance. Could we have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1013, an ordinance amending Chapter 43 of the Corleville Code of Ordinances of the city of Corleville, as previously amended, incorporating tobacco and nicotine-free parks, open spaces, and trails within the city, introduced for adoption. First consideration by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by?
Second. Seconded by Nguyen. And we have Parks and Rec Director Sherri Proud here. Would you like to talk a little bit about this initiative?
Sure. This is an initiative that was brought forward from Johnson County Public Health. They had received a grant, I believe, a couple of years ago and are working through that grant. And although parts of our parks were smoke-free under the overall Smoke Free Act for the state of Iowa, not all parts of our parks were smoke-free. And so this will make it prohibitive, we will prohibit all the tobacco products, vaping, nicotine, any kind of use in our parks, on our trail system. And this will be posted at all of our park entry points. We'll make people aware through our city newsletters and social media platforms, as well as staff and other city officials, volunteers, and a citizen can point that out to anybody that they see smoking in the park or come across smoking in the park. They'd be asked to please cease, or please leave the park grounds, go to their private car, or something like that to finish. And then if it got to the point where somebody would need to be fined, it's $50 per violation. But really, the point is to make this a self-enforcing policy and ordinance, to get that signage and to make it clear to citizens that those products aren't welcome in our park system. And then over time, just as it has in places like restaurants, our kids these days don't know any different, there are no smoking places. And so as time goes by, people won't know any different, it's a smoke-free place.
Great, thank you for that overview. Are there any other questions about this?
Just that I see that we added the golf course.
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
I'm not reading this correctly.
It says excluding?
Excluding the golf course.
And Corleville Waters and US Waters.
What US Waters do we have?
Clear Creek, Iowa River, both are waters of the US, and I believe Muddy Creek.
Oh.
I wondered that, too. I wondered that same thing. Anything that's impacted, if you impact it with, if you think about development, if you impact that with development, it's the waters of the US. Those are the ones that they have to mitigate for, when we've been talking about our clerking mitigation.
Ah, okay.
Any other questions about this or comments? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes with Gross absent. Number 11, Rec Center and Indoor Pool Competition Center Master Plan. This pre-design services agreement is for updating the 2004 Rec Center and Indoor Pool concept. This would expand the previous indoor pool concept into a large indoor competition center to be shared with West High, Liberty High, Northwest Junior High, and North Central Junior High. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a professional services agreement with Newman-Monsin Architects for concept design for the renovations to the Corleville Recreation Center and Indoor Pool Competition Center, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Do you have any information you'd like to share with us on this, Sherri?
Sure, I kind of wanted to bring my pom-poms and go, yay, I'm so excited about this item. This is, as you mentioned, we last developed a master plan to replace the Recreation Center, which was built in 1972, in 2004. And so we're excited to get to take a look at that master plan again, to see if it's still relevant for our community. And we know that the aquatics part of it was not included on the master plan as far as the competition pool when we did this in 2004, and the pool is now about 35 years old. We're at the top of that lifespan that people recommend to start looking at major renovations or replacements of indoor pools. And we also know that we have a second high school that we're serving currently within the Corleville Recreation Center Indoor Pool. And the school district is really under pressure from the Iowa Athletic Associations for both boys and girls teams, because both West and Liberty have grown to be large schools, and both should really should have their own swim team. So this competition center would serve West High, Liberty High, Northwest Junior High, and North Central Junior High, or at that time, they'll be middle schools by then. And we'll look at how that all lays out along with some recreational water for our community.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Number 10, Smoke-Free Places and Tobacco- and Nicotine-Free Parks and Trails. This ordinance would prohibit the use of all tobacco, vape, and nicotine products on all park grounds and facilities within those park grounds excluding U.S. and Corleville waters and golf courses. And this is the first reading of this ordinance. Could we have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1013, an ordinance amending Chapter 43 of the Corleville Code of Ordinances of the City of Corleville as previously amended incorporating tobacco and nicotine-free parks, open spaces, and trails within the city. Introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Winn. And we have Parks and Rec Director Sheri Proud here. Would you like to talk a little bit about this initiative?
Sure. This is an initiative that was brought forward from Johnson County Public Health. They had received a grant, I believe, a couple of years ago and are working through that grant. And although parts of our parks were smoke-free under the overall Smoke-Free Act for the State of Iowa, not all parks, parts of our parks were smoke-free. So this will make it prohibitive, we will prohibit all the tobacco products, vaping, nicotine, any kind of use in our parks, on our trail system. And this will be posted at all of our park entry points. We'll make people aware through our city newsletters and social media platforms, as well as staff and other city officials, volunteers, and a citizen can point that out to anybody that they see smoking in the park or come across smoking in the park. They'd be asked to please cease or please leave the park grounds, go to their private car, or something like that to finish. And then if it got to the point where somebody would need to be fined, it's $50 per violation. But really, the point is to make this a self-enforcing policy and ordinance to get that signage and to make it clear to citizens that those products aren't welcome in our park system. And then over time, just as it has in places like restaurants, our kids these days don't know any different. There are no smoking places. And so as time goes by, people won't know any different. It's a smoke-free place.
Great. Thank you for that overview. Are there any other questions about this?
Just that I see that we added the golf course.
No.
No.
Okay.
Nope.
I'm not reading this.
No.
It says excluding...
Excluding the golf course.
And Corleville waters and U.S. waters.
Yeah.
What U.S. waters do we have?
Clear Creek, Iowa River, both are waters of the U.S., and I believe Muddy Creek.
Oh.
I wondered that, too. Yeah. I wondered that same thing. Yeah. Anything that's impacted, if you impact it with, if you think about development, if you impact that with development, it's the waters of the U.S. Is the, if it, those are the ones that they have to mitigate for when we've been talking about our Clear Creek mitigation.
Ah, okay.
Any other questions about this or comments? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes with Gross absent. Number 11, Rec Center and Indoor Pool Competition Center Master Plan. This pre-designed services agreement is for updating the 2004 Rec Center and Indoor Pool concept. This would expand the previous indoor pool concept into a large indoor competition center to be shared with West High, Liberty High, Northwest Junior High, and North Central Junior High. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a professional services agreement with Newman-Monsin Architects for concept design for the renovations to the Corleville Recreation Center and Indoor Pool Competition Center. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Do you have any information you'd like to share with us on this?
Sure. I kind of wanted to bring my pom-poms and go, "Yay, I'm so excited about this item." This is, as you mentioned, we last developed a master plan to replace the recreation center, which was built in 1972. In 2004, and so we're excited to get to take a look at that master plan again to see if it's still relevant for our community. And we know that the aquatics part of it was not included on the master plan as far as the competition pool when we did this in 2004 and such. And the pool is now about 35 years old. We're at the top of that lifespan that people recommend to start looking at major renovations or replacements of indoor pools. And we also know that we have a second high school that we're serving currently within the Corleville Recreation Center indoor pool. And the school district is really under pressure from the Iowa Athletic Associations for both boys' and girls' teams because both West and Liberty have grown to be large schools and both should, really should have their own swim teams. So this competition center would serve West High, Liberty High, Northwest Junior High, and North Central Junior High, or at that time, they'll be middle schools by then. And we'll look at how that all lays out along with some recreational water for our community. And this will be split, the cost of this pre-designed services is $150,988.94. That will be split between the Iowa City Community School District and the City of Corleville, with the city paying 60% and our little over $90,000, and the district paying the remaining balance of that. We expect this process to take about four to four and a half months, and there will be lots of opportunity for the community to get to weigh in at different open houses and events that we'll have throughout the next few months.
Well, that is very, very exciting. I think all of us would want to bring our pom-poms and celebrate this project as it moves forward. Does anyone else have any questions about this item?
Because the school district won't approve it till their next board meeting, this will be subject to this, this agreement will be subject to the board actually approving their share of it also.
So is the 60/40 a typical, when we've done things in the past with school districts?
So we didn't base this on our 2080 agreement, past 2080 agreement, which is 30%. But instead, I had the, I sent all the information off to our architects or our proposed architects and came back with how much recreational water versus how much competition water versus the rest of what might be the rest of the recreation center. And that's how we came up with that number. Talked over with the school district.
Going forward, assume everything moves as we hope it will, is that the sort of split you would see for the whole project?
I think, I think that's under, it has to be under discussion, again, based on how much, more what we did with the 2080 agreement the first time was how much time they used in the pool and not how much pool, you know, pool water there was. So we'd have to look at that. And the district's use of the pools has really changed since I came as the first aquatics coordinator in 1992. And so we'll have to really look at that with the district. But they definitely don't want to own pools. They've said that to me many times and definitely would like to participate in a cost share and turn that all over to the city. So I think we'll be somewhere around either the same number that we had before or slightly higher.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Item B, this is an MOU, and this will split the cost of the pre-designed services agreement. The city will pay 60% of the cost and the school district will cover 40%. Could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Iowa City Community School District to share costs of an agreement to provide a design concept for the renovation to the Corleville Recreation Center and Indoor Pool Competition Center master plan. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments?
I guess I have a technical question. All these agreements are not to exceed X. How often does it not, not, how often is it under X?
Well, it's easier with design contracts, it's stay under, you know? When you have a construction bid project, especially when you're digging something, you don't know it's underground. So these usually, use usually stay, stay the same. The architects' contracts are usually under or at that cost.
Or sometimes, it's not uncommon to be a little under then, huh?
Yeah. I mean, most of the time, I'll tell you, it's about what they, what they put in there. But yeah, and if there's a, if it goes above, you have to get council approval for that anyways.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number 12, Governor's Traffic Safety Contract. The FY 2024 Highway Safety Grant will cover several items related to improver, improving driver safety. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau for Traffic Services. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Winn. Questions on this item or comments?
Just out of curiosity, this is probably a question for Shane. What are two targeted traffic enforcement projects?
I thought they were called speed traps.
Oh, is that what?
Is that the technical term?
There's, there are two multi-jurisdiction projects. So we agreed to organize two projects concerning Corleville. The last one we did was speed at the First Avenue Construction Project. So I had a complaint about people going through the construction zone way too fast. So the Sheriff's Department and us worked together on a day and monitored speed. So that's a typical speed project.
Okay, thanks.
And this is a grant we, we've gotten before. This is not a new grant, correct?
Yeah, we're somewhere around the 30th year running.
This is nothing new.
Yeah, long-term.
It seems like we're giving a lot of service, activities, services for that amount of money.
Does that grant cover the cost of doing all that we're committed to doing as part of this?
It does. The only thing it doesn't cover is gasoline. I mean, our, our part of it is gasoline, wear and tear on the car, and benefits for the officers. But the cost of the officers on overtime is completely covered by Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau.
Okay. Excellent.
All right, any other questions? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number 13, we have two lease agreements. The first is a lease that will allow Sprintcom LLC to continue using the Heartland Water Tower for a telecommunications facility for the next 20 years. This will increase the rent from $300 per month to $1,500 per month with 10% increases every five years. And the public hearing for this item will be on October 10, 2023. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a date for a public hearing on the intention to enter into a 20-year lease extension with Sprintcom LLC at the Heartland Water Tower. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Winn. I'll start off, I'm assuming, you know, it's a pretty big jump to go from $300 to $1,500, but I'm assuming that increase reflects the amount of time that they've gone without an increase.
Yeah, they, they had some increases. It started at 300, it ended up being like maybe $500 a month by the time we're done. And this matches the starting price at the main water tower at the plant. Verizon has a tower up there. And there's also another company that wants to put some facilities on this, this water tower. We've been trying to get them to come show us whether they can do it. But that's the, that's pretty much the going rate, you know, around this area for, for towers and for tower rent.
Awesome.
Yeah, $300 they had, they were.
Yeah, that's, I, yes. I, I've seen agreements like this before, and I, it occurred to me that they, they've been getting a very good team.
They have. They really didn't fight too much when we told them that new price either.
Any other questions about this? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Now, for the next lease agreement, this lease agreement is for 16 acres to be used for agricultural purposes. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a farm lease with Josh Amlon for an approximate 16-acre parcel located north of U.S. Highway 6 and east of Interstate 380. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions on this item?
Yeah, this is the property that's almost, almost a tiffin. It is a property, it's got, right now, there's Jersey barriers in front of it. It's the old Carew, and Jerry Ambrose owned it before. And we will use part of this property for when Kansas Avenue goes through, that'll be part of it that'll be used for a detention basin out in the Westland East area, so. And in the meantime, we've had some incidents with dumping, so having somebody take care of the property by farming it is a, is a good item until, and farm leases only go year to year, so if we need the property, we can give them notice. And I think it's August that we have to give notice and that we can terminate their lease, so.
When do we, when do we think we'll need it?
It really is dependent on when development in that area occurs and when we really need to put those, that infrastructure in.
Nobody knows.
But we haven't had this property leased before. It's done at least, yeah.
I think he's just gonna put hay or something on there because it's not exactly a flat piece of property.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number 14, Consulting Services Agreement. This is a nine-month consulting services agreement with former human resource and risk manager Mike Funky to assist our current human resource and risk management department with various projects and to help with the transition of the newly hired manager. Can I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Michael Funky for human resources and risk management services. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember... Jones. Seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Winn. Questions, comments, or discussion?
I guess I was a little surprised this is monthly, not hourly? That's what...
Yeah, we just decided that that would be the best way because it's really hard to determine the exact number of hours that he would be working. And we also set it up this way because there are several things that only happen once a year, and that's really why it turned out to be advantageous to do it over the nine months because insurance renewals only happen one time a year. The union negotiations only happen at one particular time a year, so that's just the way we set it up.
How did we all drive at that number? Just curious.
That was a proposal that he gave us for the amount, and we compared it to other consulting services that we've had, and it seemed reasonable.
So Winnie's, how many hours is he working? Do we?
We, on average, it'd be about 10 hours per week.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I appreciate his willingness to do this. I know that it's really important that we stay on top of all these things, and so we have a good team. Thank you.
Great. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number 15, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider, consider motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to U.
Moved by Winn. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes with Gross absent. Number 16, City Administrators Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week, several of us got to attend the Iowa League of Cities Conference, which was very educational as always. But congratulations to the mayor, who was elected to the Iowa Mayors Association, so representing eastern Iowa and cities of our size. And Councilmember Lori Goodrich was elected to the Iowa League of Cities Board. So those are, it's great having representation from Corleville in both of those, both of those ways. It's also a good way for us to get information quickly in what's happening, especially like in the Iowa Legislature and other areas like that. So thank both of you for your willingness to serve. Just a reminder to citizens that next week is the mayor's cleanup week, so it's on your regular garbage pickup day, so that is coming up. And then I know Lori will cover our big anniversary celebration this weekend, so that's it.
Great, thank you very much. Mayor's report, I really don't have anything this evening. I just want to echo Kelly's sentiment. We had a really productive week at the League of Cities Conference and want to thank our neighbors to the north, the folks in Cedar Rapids, for being wonderful hosts. Always love it when that event is, is close to home. It's, it's, makes it really convenient to attend and love learning about what's happening in other municipalities across the state. And that is all I have. City Attorneys Report?
Hi, I'm nothing, thank you.
Okay, awesome. Committee and Councilmembers Report. We'll start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations, you and Lori. Just want to briefly mention, Houses and Homes is, is doing a fundraiser on Sunday. Unfortunately, it competes with the 150th thing at the arena, but if you don't mind going back and forth, I think you can attend both events. This one will be at the Green State Credit Union on, out on 965, and, and we'll have a variety of food to partake in and obviously an important organization. I think we heard from the ambassadors tonight how they utilize that organization to help people in the community. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Winn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations. Congratulations to Councilmember Lori Goodrich as well. My condolences to Mitch and his family for the loss of his brother. It's always hard to lose a loved one, and it's especially hard to lose a loved one when life is just crazy. And I know that Council Mitch, Councilmember Gross would like to be here with us tonight, but it's fitting that he's taking some time off just to recharge from all of the things that happened within his family. For the 150-year celebration this coming Sunday, you can buy a cookbook that is put together by community members. It's, there's great recipe and great story in there. So I would like to encourage folks to come out, celebrate with us, with the city, and also purchase a cookbook. You'll have a couple of different opportunities to buy that cookbook. The first one is being at that celebration from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Extreme Arena. And then hopefully, we'll have, you know, those for sale at the library and hopefully at City Hall and the Rec Center as well. Community meal is this Friday, so if you are free, come out and eat with us. It's gonna be at the Corleville Public Library front lawn. Bring some lawn chairs, some blanket. It is going to be a fantastic meal, home-cooked, traditional Chinese food. This time is aligned with the Mid-Autumn Festival, and so we are going to celebrate Harvest Moon with traditional food. That is, that is a celebration that happened a lot in a lot of country, in South Asia and Southeast Asia. So I invite everybody to come out and celebrate with us, and that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. I'm really looking forward to that. That sounds awesome. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Sheri Proud and her staff for hosting the open house at Northridge Pavilion tonight as they start discussions about redesign of the Northridge Park Playground. And I know there'll be another opportunity, at least one or more opportunities to provide input there. What, is there a date for your open house at the Rec Department? I'm sorry.
It's the last Sunday, I think, in October.
Last Sunday in October, and there'll be an opportunity there to provide input on, on the Northridge Park. So I just wanted to thank your staff and thank those citizens that turned out and gave their input. And then next week marks Band Book Week at the Corleville Library, and I know a number of us are, are reading. There'll be a display in the library. We haven't done this for, they haven't done this for a couple of years, but there'll be a display set up in the library with community members as well, and some council members, reading band books during that time. So an opportunity to stop in to the library and take a look at that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Awesome, thank you very much. And finally, Councilmember Goodrich?
I do have a few things want to encourage everyone, and everyone's invited to the 150th Anniversary Celebration, and it is at the Extreme Arena this Sunday, October 1st, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. You can come and go as you like. There'll be activities outside the arena, on the street. We'll have a petting zoo, and the police and fire trucks will be there, and also some other activities outside with the Parks and Recreation Center, doing some fun things. And then we'll have a, as you walk in, it'll be very welcoming balloons and so on, and setting of Stump the Historians. So come with your questions about Corleville. That'll be fun. That'll be running throughout from 2:00 to 5:00. There'll be refreshments and cupcakes, and we'll be singing Happy Anniversary to Corleville. The mayor will be leading that, but we'll have live music from 2:00 to 5:00. Adam Beck, and then from 3:00 to 5:00 is Kevin Burt. The Community Foundation will be there. We'll be enjoying some information from the University of Iowa geologist Ryan Clark with Dolores Slade, who will talk to us about fossils and the display that they'll have there. We'll have the Heartlanders, and there'll be free ice skating. All of this is free to the public, and one of the real exciting things is young footlighters will be doing a pop-up cabaret. So they'll be performing, and there'll be costumes that you can try on and have fun with that will be sponsored by the League of Women Voters. There's just, the list is long. Historical display by Corleville, the Public Library, we'll be doing a lot of things. Tim Walsh, who wrote the book about Corleville, Image of America, will be there. You'll be able to purchase his book and also speak with him about Corleville's history. And as Hi mentioned, there'll be items for sale. The Johnson County Historical Museum, which is below in the arena, will be open, and there'll be printing press, a proclamation of Corleville, and the Antique Car Museum. If you haven't gotten to go to that, this is the day because it's free admission from 2:00 to 5:00. And then, oh, there's just so many things that I think there's something for everyone, and we, we want to invite everyone. Parking will be quite easy. You can park in the ramps. And so we invite everyone to come out for a time on 2:00 to 5:00 this Sunday. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you for that overview, and I just want to say thank you for all of your work on all of the 150th activities and events. You've done an amazing job, you and your co-chair, Stacy Houseman, and the committee. Really appreciate all of your work on that. All right, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Goodrich?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.